I'd like to call to order the minute, the, this meeting of the September 3rd City Council meeting, like you to stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have the roll. Here.
Clistic.
Present.
Gustafson. Kenny.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Six present and one absent.
We have a quorum, a couple procedural items tonight. The, under the mayor, the city administrators' report, there is a presentation tonight on the results of a survey we did on the recreational cannabis law that took place in the state of Illinois and how Darien might handle that. We're going to move that to the end of our meeting tonight so that we can handle our business and get through our business. If you want to stay for that, that's, and it's critical, that's where it's going to be. The other thing I would ask, that there are people probably here tonight who want to talk about the Carriage Greens Agreement. If they do, we would ask that you bring those comments up when that item actually comes up on our agenda, which is under our new business section. But for the time being, if you can't stay till the end, till that item comes up, and you'd like to make a comment, we will give you three minutes now to make those comments. If none, then we'll move on to the approval of minutes. There being no minutes, we move on to receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications for the council? Alderman Clister.
Thanks, Mayor. I received a phone call just a little while ago from Mrs. Ida Ray in Darien, Illinois, mentioning that trees on 75th Street are dying and she doesn't want them replaced. The concern is that they block visibility as you're turning on Farm, on 75th Street from Farmingdale, so. She doesn't want them replaced, and I actually got a few concerns, I think, last year from some complaints. I made sure to let her know that those trees are of DuPage County and the city did not put those in, so. Those are ones along 75th Street.
Right, those are the ones that DuPage County put in on the road. They asked us if they, if we wanted the trees, there was no charge for them, no in our government agreement. If there's specific trees, we'll take a look at. Again, I know that issue came up last year and we, nor the county, had seen any issues with it.
Okay. Can they move further back towards the property or no? Like, how much do we have?
Sure, I'm sure there's opportunity, you know, and again, they were all reviewed for sight distance prior to, so it wasn't just, let's pop a tree in there.
Yeah, okay. So I'm bringing it up.
Anyone else? Alderman Vaughn?
I'm gonna go first. No, you're first.
I have two, thanks, Mayor. I received an email from Jean Craig, and I'm not sure if you guys received it, about the 5G network. And her, her complaint was in regards to the 5G being installed by T-Mobile. She argues that the 5G will contaminate her home and will cause health risk and render her home uninhabitable. When are the 5G networks going in? And do we have any control over that?
No.
It's, it's an FCC issue because it's a radio frequency and the, probably within the last year, the state has adopted rules allowing the companies to start their infrastructure in municipal rights aways, on poles, things like that, so the municipalities themselves were taken out of the loop of those discussions. The city did review an ordinance, it just had to do with, I believe, fees associated with the permitting or a small amount, but it wasn't anything critical to the, you know, the construction of, of the 5G.
I believe we all received that email.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
One more. Dennis and Melissa Cable, they are requesting a street light to be installed on their block, so maybe we can look into that and see what the best, best place. I think that's 70th Street and 405 70th Street.
I'll give Dennis a call tomorrow.
Yeah, he's your, he's your employee across the room.
Yeah.
Alderman Kenny?
I'll give him, Mr. Mayor, I received three communications here. I've got one from Stan, Stan Nemec. In correlation with, he received some email, it was a threatening email. I'm going to tell residents, if you get anything, you know, that's suspicious, you know, call 911. You know, that's the, that's the best thing to do. This was a scam email. Somehow he couldn't get, he couldn't get a hold, he was, his emails weren't getting through to the proper channels. They're there now, that's, that's, that's one. Received a, a phone call today from Steve Smith. His father lives in unincorporated Farmingdale in Washington, like to be, you know, annexed into, into the city of Darien. And then my last one is, received a communication, an email from David Gore, a Darien resident, with an article from Cranes regarding Carriage Greens and the golf courses and why it's a bad investment and we should be voting no on that this evening. That's all I have for you tonight, thank you.
Joe, does that individual, is he contiguous to Darien? Is he?
Um, yes, I was talking to Steve Manning here today and it's, there's somebody, because I was, when I got the address, I was, I was surprised. I'm like, no, there's no way it's going to happen. And then they let us know that there's a, his neighbor behind him on Hudson is in the city of Darien, and they were, their property lines would butt up, so.
Okay.
He's got to go through the permitting process and everything else.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any comments? That takes us to the mayor's report, and the first item on our mayor's report is a mayoral proclamation. Whereas September is known around the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, most of us are quite aware of suicide. National Suicide Prevention and Action Month is intended to help promote and give attention to the suicide prevention services available to us and our Darien community. The goal is to speak openly about the topic of suicide, to help erase the stigma surrounding it, and to direct those in need to the appropriate support services. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, and orientation, income level, religion, or background, and whereas according to the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention, more than 47,000 people die by suicide, died by suicide in the year 2017. And whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death among adults in the U.S., and nearly 20% of all suicides were completed by people ages 45 to 54. And whereas Darien, Illinois is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, PAC leaders, police officers, and parents, as partners in supporting our community and simply being available to one another. And whereas local organizations like Suicide Prevention Services, national organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Health, and international groups like Hope for the Day are at the front lines of a war that many still refuse to discuss, as suicide and mental illness remain too uncomfortable of a topic to talk about. And whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all fighting our own battles. And whereas I encourage all residents to take time to check in with their family, friends, and neighbors on a regular basis, and to honestly communicate their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, handshake, or hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Now therefore, I, Joseph A. Marquez, Mayor of the City of Darien, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2019 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Darien. Our next item is consideration of a motion to advise and consent the appointment of John E. Callen to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Shower. Any discussion? If none, the roll.
Belzak.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
John had surgery yesterday, so he could not be here tonight to get sworn in, so he will be with us in the future to get sworn in. The next item on our agenda is our actual actuarial presentation. Michael, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this evening we've got Jason Franken of the actuarial firm Foster &amp; Foster. This past year and for the last several years, I believe this is the fourth year they're doing it, he, his firm has been engaged by the Police Pension Fund to determine actuarially what our responsibility as a city is for funding our police pensions. Jason's prepared that, again, he's been here for four years, and you have a copy of the report in your packet, and he's here to highlight, I think, give us some of the highlights of that presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I'm here tonight to discuss the results of the May 1st, 2019 actuarial valuation for the Darien Police Pension Fund. So our, one of, you know, our primary objectives when we do the actuarial valuation is to determine the, the financial status of the plan. That, that includes things such as the funded status, the unfunded liability in the plan, and probably maybe most importantly, the contribution that's, that's required to the plan to keep it actuarially sound, so that the plan will able, be able to meet all of its future obligations to the, the members of the pension fund. And, and so this year, there, there, there is a pretty significant increase to the contribution requirement, and, and last year we reported the recommended contribution to be $1,714,000, and that has increased this year to $1,905,000. And there's really two things that are driving that increase. One is the, the pension ramp that you've probably heard about. So each year, our contribution is designed to increase by roughly 3.5% per year, just based on the Illinois pension ramp that, that's in the Illinois pension code. So that amounts to an increase of about $45,000 that, that was sort of inherent in our calculations. So sitting here last year, I could, you know, I could tell you that, that increase was coming. A similar increase is, is expected next year, just based on the, you know, the, the mechanics of the calculation. So a $45,000 increase is attributable to that. The, the lion's share of the increase, though, is the result of the adoption of a new mortality table. So I don't want to bore you with too many details, but the Society of Actuary releases mortality tables usually around every decade. You know, they do a massive study, you know, collecting data from, from all parts of, of the country, and this most recent table that was released last fall is, is, you know, in our opinion, the most appropriate mortality table for this population. And I say that because this particular mortality study was based entirely on public sector data. So they collected public sector data from, from plans all over the country, and then they released, you know, based on the results of, of the data that they collected, they released several tables. There was really three groups of tables. There was a table that, that covered general employees, tables that covered teachers, and tables that covered public safety officers. And, and so we've adopted the public sector, public safety officer mortality table. And as a result of that study, you know, life expectancies have increased by about two years for, for a 50-year-old retiree, relative to, to the old assumption. So when people are living around two years longer, they are getting more pension payments. More pension payments means a higher liability, and a higher liability means that a larger contribution is necessary to, to meet those, those future obligations. The increase in the contribution as a result of the new mortality tables is about $145,000. So when you look at the, those two pieces, the sort of the expected mortality, or, sorry, the expected increase in the contribution due to your pension ramp, plus the new mortality table, that's how we go from the 1,700,000 to the 1,900,000. In, in terms of the funded liability, or, sorry, the funded ratio, the funded ratio remained, you know, relatively stable, it was 59 point, 59.0% last year. It dropped a little bit as a result of this new mortality table to 58.1% this year. So, you know, just looking at the funded ratio, you know, there hasn't been much change. The new mortality table, you know, we, we wouldn't expect to see mortality losses that we, you know, potentially seen in the past, and what I mean by that is people have been outliving their, our expectations for, for life expectancy, and, and so as a result, you know, we wouldn't expect, you know, significant, you know, mortality losses in, in the future. As I mentioned previously, the one thing that still is included is that expectation of around 3.5% increases in, in the contribution going forward, just based on that, that pension ramp. So there's a lot in the report, but I think those are the highlights, and I'm happy to answer any questions that, that any of you may have.
For the public sector, what are we expecting the average life expectancy of a police officer?
Based on the new mortality table, we're, we're showing a life expectancy of around, for a 50-year-old, because it's different if you're looking at someone who's just born versus someone who is age 50. We look at age 50 because that's when, you know, the, the payments begin, or can begin. So for a 50-year-old male, the average life expectancy would be to around age 84. It was around age 82 before.
What about, does it look at the spouse also?
Yes, there are, there are separate tables, you know, so as part of this study, they looked at the members who are doing, you know, the job of police officer, firefighter, those jobs, they looked at that separately from their spouses. So we do have a, you know, a, a spousal table that doesn't necessarily reflect, you know, the same factors that would go into the mortality table that we're using for the members.
Michael?
Again, Jason, just I guess for the benefit of the viewing public here, number one, Jason is hired by the Police Pension Board, engaged by the Police Pension Board to do this actuarial computation. We, within our own rights, we can have someone else do it, although there's a cost to doing that, and in the long run, we know that the pension liability is some pretty big number, assuming everything you read about the, the state and city obligations. The Police Pension Board is going to be requesting this number that Jason has calculated, the $1.9 million that the city funded at that level. The State of Illinois Department of Insurance only requires a 90%, that it be funded at 90% by the year 2040, so the nine, the $1.9 million, this theoretically more than is required by the state, but the entire time I've been treasurer since 2007, I've always requested the council, and it's always been gracious enough to include 100% funding in the budget, because all you're basically doing is kicking that can down the road if you don't fund it to that amount. This evening's discussion is not meant for approving or not approving that amount, that comes at a later date. I believe we approved that in October or November, so we can have this discussion again, but I just want the audience, the city residents, to know that that is, is an option. It's not the option that I would recommend. I don't think Jason would probably recommend it, but just so people out there know, and again, we're not approving it tonight, but I wanted Jason to come and, again, at least relay to people exactly how the determinations are made, and there, there is a lot of subjectivity to what he does, but it is all based on history, basically, and...
Yeah, and to that point, on page 15, we do a statutory minimum calculation. So that, that, as Mike said, is based on the amount that's required, based on what the state of Illinois is, is telling you, and that amount is significantly less, it's The issue with, with that amount is, you know, the, the simplest way that I can explain it is, it's like having a credit card bill and you're, you know, $1,000, and you have, you're paying $100 per month of interest, and the, the credit card company tells you that your minimum payment is $25. So you pay that $25, you've met your obligation to the credit card company for that month. However, your, your credit card bill hasn't gone down. In fact, it's gone up by $70, $75, because they're charging you $100 of interest and you're only paying $25. That's really what the state of Illinois statutory minimum is. It's an amount that they say, if, if you pay this, you've met your obligation for the year to, you know, based on the state rules. However, that doesn't, you know, give you the whole story, it doesn't, you haven't really, you, you haven't paid down your unfunded liability, in fact, you're letting it increase over time. And that's why we don't recommend that amount, is, is because what's been put in the Illinois pension code is, is really almost always about kicking the can down the road. It's 90% by 2040 right now, there's been several bills introduced, trying to extend that from 2040 out to 2050, and, you know, so it's, it's, what's in the Illinois pension code, like I said, is about kicking the can down the road, and it, what's put in there is not necess, is not about what is in the best interest of, of the city. It, it's about helping as many people as possible across the state meet that statutory minimum. So, you know, I guess I'll leave it at that.
Jason, at our meeting, when we had the presentation done, you mentioned how things change in 2036, and what happens between 2036 and 2040 in terms of those payments. You also mentioned a figure beyond the 1.9 million and what that might be when we start hitting those years. Can you talk about that and explain that a little bit?
Well, yes. So the, the pension ramp in this, I think this is what you're, you're alluding to, the, the pension ramp, as I said, is increasing, you know, increases about at 3.5%. So, while I pull out my calculator here, if you just think between now and 2040, you know, it's 21 years, if you compound at 3.5%, your, your amortization pay, payment is going to more than double during that, that period of time. So your amortization piece of that right now is 1.4 million. So if you think, you know, 1.9 million today, the expectation at 3.5% is that that payment is going to be, you know, around 3.5, you know, between 3.5 and $4 million by the time we reach 2040. And again, that's part of the, the pension ramp that has that sort of built-in increase in it. And so even, you know, even based on what we have today, there is still a fair amount of increase built in, and ideally, we would like to shift as much of the contribution to the current years as, as is reasonable, because pensions are pay now or pay later. And if you put more money in today, you get the benefit of compound interest over time. If you wait 20 years to, to make those payments, you, you have to pay the, the pension plan that compound interest, because you didn't earn it, so you have to make up for, for that, that shortfall. And, and so that's really, you know, I, I think that's what, you know, that you're talking about, is, is that we do expect the contribution to continue to increase just based on the funding mechanism that is currently in place.
Michael?
Maybe to emphasize this a little more, Jason, what you're saying, currently, our unfunded liability is approximately $21 million, which theoretically means in order to remove that, we would have, we do not have $21 million in our bank accounts today. In order to fund that today, we would have to borrow $21 million to be fully funded. So again, that's, so the question is, when do you pay that? What Jason is indicating could make sense, because we're assuming we're going to earn 7% of our, our money over the next 20 years. Is that realistic? I mean, historically, it has been, going forward, can be. Interest rates right now are falling again. Is it possible we don't make that? If you don't make that, that liability goes up. So if we're able to borrow today at 2% or 3%, you're paying it off at a lower rate as opposed to 7%. My big problem with making that as a recommendation, as Jason indicated, our plan is currently about just over 58% funded, based on his calculations. There was an article in the Chicago Tribune on August 11th, I'm sure Jason saw it, I'm sure the rest of you probably glossed over it to go to the comics, it's a lot, a lot more interesting, believe me, but it indicates statewide that the average funding of these plans is approximately 55%, which Jason has been indicating to us, that we're in the range of the average plans in the state of Illinois. That to me was just some additional outside verification that we're even a few percent over. My problem with saying, let's borrow $21 million and pay it off today, is the state of Illinois is always coming up with some new rules and things, and let's say we do go out and borrow that, and now the city is on the hook for that $21 million, does the state come along three or four years from now and say, okay, timeout, we're going to change the, the game plan here, we're going to change the rules, now we've gone out and borrowed this money, what really happens with that? I mean, so in good conscience, I can see funding it at this 100% liability, but I have problem going to that next step and saying, let's go out and borrow so we don't have to worry about this going forward, even though, again, is common, common economic sense to you and me as people running our own lives and families, it would make sense. As the city treasurer, I have a hard time making that recommendation and overcoming that hurdle.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Alderman Clister?
Thank you. On your assumption to hit 90% at 2040, are you assuming 7% bogey?
Yes, yep.
But last year we hit 5.7%. What happens if we're at like 5% or 6%? Are we only like 85 or 80%? Just out of curiosity.
Well, so, you know, I'm showing, you know, we, you know, I don't know, our, our calculations are, well, let me see, I can tell you exactly what the, so for 2019, I'm showing that the return was 6.41%. Still less than our six, our 7% assumption. So what happens when you, you fall short of your expectation? So in this particular year, we're 60 basis points less than what we assumed. And so that results in an investment loss. We were assuming 7%, we didn't quite make that this year, it wasn't, you know, significant. So we, we do, and as part of our calculations, we smoothed those investment losses over a five-year period. So if you, if we, you know, that 60 basis points translated to $100,000 loss, we would recognize 20,000 of that this year, 20,000 next year, so on. And, and so next year, maybe we get more than that, less than, you know, maybe we fall short again. We're always recognizing the, the gains and losses over, over a five-year period. If you have consistent losses, well, then that means that you're going to have, you know, consistently recognizing these, these losses, and it's going to, you know, drag your funded ratio down, and so your contribution will go up over time. And, and so there's really two ways to, you know, it, let's, if you're going to only get 6.5%, but you're assuming 7, you're really deferring some of the payment.
That was the question I was going to, is, is it better off to, I know we would like to hit 7, I know treasurer Mike always wants to hit 7, but usually for, since I've been in council, we usually bottom 6, 5.5, so...
Again, this year was 6.41%. It does vary, and as he indicated, and it works both ways, though. This year was a loss, so it's, we're recognizing that loss over five years. If there's a gain, we don't get to ignore, we don't get to take that all at once, we have to spread that over five years as well. And there's always going to, you're always going to be above or below that 7, and I believe there was one or two years in that five-year time horizon where we were actually above the 7%.
Okay.
So it does work both ways, but in today's environment, I mean, this has been a great investment this year.
Correct. If it slows down...
2019, well, the, the time period we're dealing with is April. If you looked at the numbers, when I presented the numbers after the December 31st investment report, you probably all recall, we were at basically a break even, we were at 0% return as of December 31st. So really, all that gain came in between January and April. And the market's been pretty good since, but, yeah, again, it's subject to the market like...
So when you amortize over five years, is it like year number five, you say, okay, you know, we're short 1.5%. City of Darien, you have to kick in 1.5%, or how does that always go?
It's, like I said, you're always recognizing, you know, so we do the math every year, do the calculation, and so if you have losses, you just recognize, okay, 20% of the loss from 2016, we're recognizing, 20% of the gain from 2017, we're recognizing. And so you just remember, you know, recognize 20% each year, and then based on how the assets, our gains and losses work, it determines our asset value, which determines your unfunded liability and your, your contribution requirements. So to, to your point, if we were assuming 7% and we consistently get 6.5, well, then there's always going to be upward pressure on our contribution, and it's going to go up over time. If we're going to get 6.5 and we assume 6.5, so we've lowered our expectation from 7 to 6.5, well, then it's going to take, you know, we're going to have to, you know, the, the contribution immediately is going to go up.
Go up quite a...
Quite a bit, but then you wouldn't have that consistent drift up as you had investment losses year after year. So it's, you know, we, we try to set a target that is, is reasonable with, based on the plans we work with across the state. You know, currently, the average is about 6.8% at the assumption. So there's a lot at 6.75%, there's a lot at 7%, and we're starting to see more and more people go down to 6.5. So the trend is to lower that assumption. At this point, I would say 7% is definitely within the range of, you know, of, of similar plans across the state, but there definitely is a trend to, to lower that a little bit over time.
But if we made it 8... But if we made it 8, we'd be better off then, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, in the short term, yes, yes. But, like I said, if you're, but then, you would, you would lower your contribution today, but then, your contributions 15, 20 years from now would be that much higher because you would, if you're consistently falling short of that target.
Again, part of the problem there is the state mandates what your investments can be held in. They allow no more than 65% of the assets to be held in equities, which means 35% in fixed income. Uh, while the police pension board has discretion in directing that percentage. Police pension board right now is not comfortable, since I've come on, they used to be about 45% equities. I've currently got them at 55, which means we have 55 equity, 45% fixed income. Everybody keeps hearing that inverted yield curve, uh, the 10-year bond, you're earning 1.5%. It's hard to get up to that 7% if you're only earning 1.5% on 45% of your assets. The equity part has to do far better than that. And while I might be able to do better individually, I can't, don't get to manage these and don't get to hold me accountable, which is probably a better thing.
Yeah, I had Enron, you know where that's at now, so.
Any other questions for Jason? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason.
Takes us to our city clerks report. Joanne?
Uh, one item, Mr. Mayor. Meet and greet with Mayor Marquez will take place on Monday, September 16th at 6:00 PM here at City Hall in the upstairs conference room.
Uh, city administrators report, Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. We have the, um, discussion on the cannabis, on the recreational cannabis, which we'll discuss at the end of the meeting, so I have nothing else.
Okay. Department head information, any questions for Chief Thomas or for Mr. Gombeck? Uh, if none, then it takes us to our treasurers report, Mike?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 192010 in the amount of $289,689.46 from listed funds, as well as payroll for the period ended August 29th in the amount of $266,529.93 for a total to be approved of $556,219.39.
Motion to approve. Alderman Kenny, second by Alderwoman Sullivan. Any questions? If none, the roll.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Takes us to standing committee reports. Do they all even have any standing committee reports tonight? Mary?
Um, I do, Mayor. The Administrative and Finance Committee met tonight, and we had an opportunity to, um, have a presentation by Jim Savio, who, um, reported on a preliminary on our audit from 2019. And, um, we will be meeting again on, um, October 7th before the city council meeting at 6 o'clock in the upstairs conference room.
Thank you. Alderman Belzak?
Yes, the next scheduled municipal services meeting will be on September 23rd in, um, this room. 7 o'clock.
Alderman Kenny?
Uh, our, the police committee meeting will me, meet on Monday, September 16th at 6 o'clock across the parking lot in the police training room.
Thank you, Joe.
Joe, sorry, one more time.
Mary?
Yeah. Um, and then, one more, the Economic Development Committee will be meeting next Wednesday, September 11th at 7:00 PM in the city chambers.
Thank you. Takes us to questions and comments, agenda-related. If none, takes us to old business. I'm sorry. Mr. Waz?
Good evening. My name is Timothy Waz, I'm a Darien resident. I wanted to address the board this evening regarding the Carriage Greens Initiative. I've read the contract that you're all looking at. I have serious reservations about this. The $23,500 base that's included in the contract, I don't know where you folks got this, this amount from, listing this as a base. I can tell you that in the last two months alone, it's my understanding that the money is forwarded to Mr. Brodick, Broderick, and then, it's paid back through sales tax and other tax revenues in, in addition, virtual golf that the city will be a partner in. I can tell you, though, that in the last two months alone, Mr. Broderick has realized 5700, the city has realized $5,700 for the months of June and July. And as I read the contract, this 5,700 would be credited toward the 23, I'm sorry, by month. The first one is $2,000, and the other one is 3,500, $3,700. These are amounts that would be credited against the 23,500 as I read the, the contract. Let me forward these to you, please.
Tim, I need to remind you, you only have three minutes.
Thank you. Also, there are multiple corporations listed at that address. I don't know how you get to your 23,5 number, but I see three different corporations at that address. I see Broderick Holdings, I see Carriage Way West, and I see a new, a new corporation at that location, Carriage Greens Venues, that's new as of April of this year. I don't know how you got to your 23,500 numbers, but there's three entities at that residence, at that location, doing business. These are for you. I apologize for not making copies. I made a lot of copies recently, and I was unable to make copies for all of you this evening. I see serious contract deficiencies. Alderman Belzak, you raised a very good issue that there are deficiencies in that contract. There's no remedy should Mr. Broderick not meet the terms of the contract, other than to pay back the money. He could use the city's money for 10 years, and after 10 years, put $400,000 in the bank, and after 10 years, give the city back $400,000 and realize 80,000 or whatever interest is paying. Another consideration I would like you to look at, I, I don't claim to have any real estate acumen, but I did go on the Recorder of Deeds, uh, website, and I totaled approximately 8.37 million dollars of, of debt on eight different parcels attributed to that location. I've made you excerpts of those. I apologize again for not providing all of you copies. What city will the, what, uh, what ability will the city have to audit Mr., Mr. Broderick's pro, uh, business to, to be sure that we're getting our fair share? There's no provision in the contract. The worst-case scenario, maybe Mr., I don't know why Mr. Broderick cannot manage his own affairs. I don't know why. His business has been in business here since 1968. His business predates the city by a year. Worst-case scenario, the, the, the golf cart, the golf course closes, Mr. Broderick can pay off some secured and unsecured debt and walk away with some money. Or he can put nine holes of golf there. Uh, a recent Tribune item, uh, shows what happens when golf courses close. I may have given that to you already. There is a default zoning here. It's multifamily. The city would have great discretion in any, in any development that was put in there. You could put condos, you could, you could put high-end condos. Uh, additionally, I would like this evening to see this matter tabled to a later date because Mr. Gustafson, Mr. Gustafson is missing this evening. Uh, if, if it went three to three, the mayor would have the ability to cast a, a tiebreaker vote, would you not, sir?
Yes.
I, I don't think that's fair. The whole process of this thing was based upon Mayor Marquez's direction. The, the economic development got this item, not of their own volition, not of a consensus of the minds of all the learned people on that board, but by your direction, Mr. Mayor. So, I would like to see it tabled this evening to a full city council. Thank you for, for your attention, and I hope you consider all the information that I gave you.
Mr. Leopoldo?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Council.
Steve, you want to lower it a little bit?
A little, a little, yeah, sure, guys, right? Um, you know, you, everybody here knows I'm very much in favor of economic development. If this is a good plan, so be it. Um, I just do have some questions about it, and I do have some concerns about how it's written. Um, and thank you for, in the pre, pre-meeting session before we were on camera and everything, you mentioned, um, and correct me if I get this incorrect, that you went to Carriage Greens and you offered them, um, a suggestion of what amount of money they would need in order to improve...
No, no, I offered them the opportunity to present to me those items and their associated costs.
In order to...
I didn't know, I didn't offer any money. I just said, present me with the items and then the cost.
In order what you would need to improve the course and so forth?
Take it to the next level.
Got it. Okay. So, thank you for that, because I was going to ask a question about why the business, if it needed money, wouldn't go get a loan or apply for a bank? And so, I thank you for clarifying that earlier, but I just wanted to make sure people who weren't in pre-session were aware of that.
Right.
Um, I was out, I was just wondering, as, uh, Mr., I think Walls, uh, addressed the gentleman before me, um, I was wondering if the city has any accounting of what debts and obligations are currently outstanding for the business? I didn't notice that in the packet. It might be in some other information I don't have. Um, I was also wondering if the city knows, uh, where would be in line to recover taxpayer dollars in the event of any failures of the business? Um, and if the expenditure is approved, um, does the city have adequate funds and reserve to support, um, protecting public health regarding the matters in Willowbrook? It's another concern that I have just outstanding. And then, lastly, um, regarding the $180,000, the $80,000 that's already been spent, I didn't notice any conditions upon which that $100,000 had to specifically be spent. So, I would encourage the board to maybe table this to the next meeting to address some of those deficiencies that are brought up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Takes us to our consent agenda. Item A, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance amending...
Mayor, I wanted to make one announcement before you get into that.
Sure.
Okay, my apologies. On item number, letter number F, for a proposal from Kenny Construction on this item this evening, I have no personal, um, interest in Kenny Construction whatsoever. People might, because I'm in real estate, I've got no, um, personal interest in that at all. Thank you.
We know what kind of car you drive, Joe, so we know.
2012 Ford, baby. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not living on a hog.
All right. Consent agenda, in consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance amending various sections of Title A, Chapter 13, sale of tobacco products to minors of the City of Darien City Code. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property owned by the City of Darien, and these are police department items. Uh, item C, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property owned by the City of Darien, and these are municipal services items. Item D, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Associated Technical Services Limited for the 2019 water leak survey in an amount not to exceed $12,109.50 for leak detection phase and per unit cost for leak detection phase in the amount of $420 per main line or service leak and $95 per fire hydrant leak or main line, main line valve for a total amount not to exceed $16,000. Item E, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Tria Architecture Incorporated for the professional design services for the Public Works Facility located at 1041 South Frontage Road in an amount not to exceed $23,850. Item F, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution rejecting all bids, waiving all competitive bid process, waiving the competitive bid process, and accepting a proposal from Kenny Construction Company in an amount not to exceed $692,560 for the Seminole 72-inch storm sewer lining project. Seminole Drive and Plainfield Road under McDonald's Parking Lot, East 801 Plainfield Road, and a contingency in the amount of $125,000 for the unforeseen evacuations and spot repairs due to potential conflicts. The total expenditure request would be not to exceed $817,500. Item G, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution awarding a contract extension to Homer Tree Care in an amount not to exceed $216,750 for the city's 2019-2020 tree trimming and removal program. And item H, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a proposal from Core and Main for the purchase of the following commercial water, for the following, commercial water meters and remote readers in an amount not to exceed $250,162.40 for 85 1 and 1/2 inch, 75 2-inch, 35 3-inch, 9 4-inch, and 2 6-inch water meters and remote readers. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, second by Alderman Kenny, and the roll.
Shower?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Motion, the consent agenda is approved. New business, item A, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving an economic development agreement with Carriage Greens Country Club and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the economic development agreement. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak, discussion.
Joe, um, based on what Mr. Waz indicated, I do have one question, really, of Brian. Uh, Mr. Waz, I think you bring up a good point. I just want further clarification on it, because in the video gaming, Brian, he gave us some sheets that indicated in the last couple of months, we've received over $5,000 in video gaming revenue from that location. Uh, I know what we get as a city, and it's hard to believe that we're getting, on average, $60,000 from that, because that would be most of what we're getting in video gaming from the state of Illinois. In the calculations that Brian put together, you had indicated it was $5,402, and, uh, in develop being that $23,500 bogey. I don't know if you had a chance to see what Mr. Waz presented. I'm sort of surprised, number one, you'd be able to get that information, because, and I'm not saying you're not entitled to it, but usually, the state restricts who has access to that. Even general council members don't. Uh, Brian, myself as treasurer, I'm sorry?
To the gaming?
To the gaming.
The gaming's online.
That is online, okay.
Yes.
Uh, and I guess I'm asking you, because he's showing 3, $30,000 for one month and $2,000 for another month, so, over $5,000 for those two months, and yet, in your schedule, it's showing $5,300 for the year. So, I'm just having trouble reconciling that. So, I thank you for calling that to our, our attention, because it is something that is definitely a number that should be proved up.
Uh, well, the numbers I had were from either the city's information or the state's. That's what I could tell you. So, I don't know, I don't know where, um, that came from, but I could tell you when I got the information...
Can we table it to confirm later, then? If you don't have the information?
I had the inform, I went right to the state site.
Oh, oh.
And, and prepared, early on, we did an estimate to, to look at the amount of money, and I looked at the state website for gaming, and I looked at our information locally, because there are some things that we do know, uh, in terms of food and beverage, in terms of, um, uh...
Amusement tax.
The amusement tax, we have all that.
So, if you're getting $5,200 a month, that's almost $50,000 a year.
Right. And our video gaming revenue, I believe, is approximately 125, 130,000 total for the year from all the video gaming establishments we have in the city. So, I am having trouble assuming that we're getting $60,000 from them, and maybe another $60,000 spread out over all the other establishments, because my understanding was always...
It's not even the...
One particular location does real well in that. Again, I don't want to throw any names out here, uh, for privacy purposes, but...
But if you vote on it now, you can't change the numbers later, though, right? What we agreed to for the loan and payback, what's, that's set, so...
I don't know, I assume not, but I, I don't know the answer.
The number, the numbers, you know, I, all I can tell you is on the state website, and I got the numbers. I don't know, uh, these to compare.
Okay, so, you're comfortable that $5,202 is shown on the state website as our revenue from video gaming?
Yep.
For Carriage Greens.
For Carriage Greens, that's the whole city, correct?
For Carriage Greens, right.
Right. Thought, right, from Carriage Greens, I'm sorry.
Questions, anyone else?
If it was...
Alderman Belzak?
And, and just for clarification, we have done a title search in regard to what position Arlene would be in, in, in regard to this. I, I don't think that's been mentioned at all, or, for the public.
I'm sorry, I thought John had mentioned it earlier in the workshop. He, the title...
He did in the workshop.
Oh, he did in the workshop, yes.
Not in, not when we did it on camera.
And, and he looked, um, went through the title. We talked to the owners of the club about the title, and I think you would call a third position in, you know, in, in the legal world, it's third position. And e- even the assessed value of the course, if you look at the assessor's information, is far more than any of the, um, items that were shown in the, in the title search.
The three liens combined.
Yes, correct.
So for a close, we, do you have two people in front of us?
Correct.
His mother and his sister. It's inter-family.
Which was, that was known from the beginning. I mean, we, uh, Brian had told us that. We just didn't get the title to confirm that till, uh, John, I think, got it.
And do we have a ballpark number as to what those liens are, the first and the second?
Do you remember, Joe, offhand?
Yeah, we, uh, we heard the figures around, uh, one, a total of about one point seven million.
Okay.
We would be third.
Right.
But the, uh, the title search calls it a mortgage. Mr. Broderick calls it a internal family loan.
Well, it's a mortgage.
It's a mortgage. And, uh, we would be third, our thirty, three hundred and sixty-six would be third on that in the assessed valuation of the property. Brian, we, we found that out today. Uh, it's-
And a couple of different parcels. One's, um, one's four point three million, one's one point one, then we had three hundred and seven, and then a million one. And those are even, those are just assessed at the county, so-
Right.
Not even the market.
So well, well within the-
Well, yes.
It's well, well above the liability.
Right.
For the record, it's a hundred and eighty thousand that we make in video gaming per year.
Yeah, we made a hundred and eighty this last year.
In the golf course place, or just total, total?
Total. We made a hundred and eighty in, in video gaming revenue from the state this, I believe it was this last year, when we did our budget, we saw a hundred and eighty thousand. Alderman, close time.
So I'm, I'm in favor of, you know, all Darien businesses, but I got a lot of phone calls this past weekend, and it actually goes back to, uh, you know, health and safety of my ward residents. They have a tough time with the taxpayer bailout of a golf course when property values are depreciating due to Sterigenics and potentially they might, uh, open back up. I mean, I can't go back to my residents and say, hey, you know what? Property values are going down and we're giving, uh, you know, a bailout to the golf course here. So normally, I would be a hundred percent in favor of this, but until Sterigenics for me, for my ward has shut down, we're just too worried to spend any more taxpayer dollars and anything else.
You know, I'd like to clarify that because you made the comment that you'd like to see this money go to Sterigenics. You want to see the city have the revenue to do that. When we created the budget this year, you may remember that we budgeted two hundred thousand dollars for Sterigenics. What, and at that point, the seal order had not been issued, so we thought we might be using that for ambient air testing or whatever. We, it was, of course, the seal order came down, so we did not use it for ambient air testing, but we still have that two hundred thousand dollars in our budget for the battle, so to speak, against Sterigenics. So it's not as if we're saying this money is in place of that money. This is in our five hundred thousand dollar emergency and economic incentive money, but that two hundred thousand dollars is still there for the Sterigenics.
Well, I thought two weeks ago, we talked about potentially taking out a loan if we had to of an agreement of Willowbrook and other.
If we had to, if we developed, if we developed an IGA, an intergovernmental agreement, uh, Treasure Corning, uh, we, we, we mentioned that the other day, and your feeling is, we have not even negotiated or talked about it, but we would have to take out a bond in order to do anything like that, correct?
Very much so. We don't have that much cash, obviously.
Yeah. So I mean, the three hundred and sixty-six would not interfere. We, we have, would still have to take out a bond. Depend, and, and again, the IGA is not something we've even entered in negotiations with, with the other communities, and we don't know what our share of that would be when we do negotiate them.
Nor do you know the market value, what you might be looking at. You don't even know what the starting point is before you even start bringing it up among the municipalities, but I guarantee it's going to be more than we'll have the ability to fund out of current operations.
Correct.
Yes, and it's-
You know, the thing I want to emphasize with this, and, and this is critical because, you know, you can talk about a level of sales tax revenue we receive now and what we make above that coming off the three sixty-six. One of the thing, one of the aspects you can't put a price on is the fact that we have a twenty-year agreement with Mr. Broderick to utilize the golf course for non-golf events, recreational entertainment. The Chamber of Commerce came to me yesterday, or the other day, Friday, and said they'd like to run a taste of, taste of Darien, where they would put up a tent on the golf course, they would have food vendors from around the city and outside the city come in, and they would have a taste, a taste of, uh, Darien event, and the proceeds from that would go to the Rotary's Backpack Program. In other words, they don't want to raise money just for themselves. They want to raise money for the Rotary's Backpack Program. That's just one item. We're looking at concerts on the green, we're looking at movies, uh, the Darien Lions Club, their Darien Day in the Park, which they currently have at the community park, and now they have the freedom to pick a different date and have it at Carriage Greens with a band, with, uh, food. The other thing that I want to mention is, if we have a concert on the green, we don't just have Mr. Broderick providing food. We have Chuck Pine come over with his food truck, we have John Manos come over with his food truck, we have Zazos or whoever come over with their food trucks. So we have other businesses now that are enjoying revenue because we're holding a concert on the green. We're talking about a winter festival, we're talking about an ice skating pond, we're talking about a movie night for families. There are a lot of possible events, and I've received calls from business people in this community who've said, if you do have this contract with Carriage Greens, could I, as a business owner, sponsor one of those events? Or I'd be, they would be paying for a band, or they would be paying for a car show. So I mean, it's not as if the city's going to go out and say, we need more money now for concerts. We're actually going to have businesses come to us and say, I want to sponsor this, I want to sponsor that. These are unique opportunities. And Mike, when we negotiated the contract with Mr. Broderick, Mike looked at Brian and said, well, we could figure out a cost for our use of the facility, and we could take that off of the three sixty-six. And Brian says, no, you don't have to do that. So we're getting an opportunity to utilize an outdoor facility, something, you know, and you can disagree with me, anybody in the audience. Carriage Greens is a gem for Darien. It is. Not a lot of communities have it. And whether Crane Chicago Business says that golf courses are poor investments, I found an article in another magazine that said, if you want to bring a golf course back to life, this is how you do it. And many of the items on that list are items that we're paying for to assist Mr. Broderick, okay? And we're not looking at a golf course that's failing. We're looking at a golf course that is on the upswing. Mr. Broderick told the Economic Development Committee, and Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, but he saw a fifteen percent growth over this last year with a ten percent profit. So we're not bailing him out. We are going to him and saying, you are being successful, you are bringing your golf course back, and now we want to know what to, how we could take it to the next level. Those of you who haven't been in Darien a long time, there was a time on a Friday night that you could walk into the sand trap and wait forty-five minutes to get a table. And that's what I want again. I want that to be a destination for people. And look at it from this perspective, you put a concert on that golf course, you put a movie night on that golf course, and all of a sudden, people turn around and see this banquet facility there. And they say, gee, my daughter's getting married in a year or two. Maybe we'll investigate and we'll take a look here, okay? This is an advantage for him. So by having these out, these out, this outdoor venue, we're helping him develop more revenue, which we will get sales tax, food and beverage tax, and amusement tax on. It's a win-win for the city of Darien. So this is not a failing business, this is not a bailout, this is a loan. And if Brian decides to sell that golf course in five years, we get, we get our money back minus whatever he's come in over the twenty-three thousand five hundred.
Who's going to buy the golf course?
Whoever want, if he decides to sell it, he has to find somebody to buy it. But you know what? Another, and just to answer another question, why ten years? Because ten years shows our level of commitment to Carriage Greens, and it shows that that gentleman over there has a long-term commitment to this community. This is his family's legacy. He wants this golf course in his family for his children someday, and he's very sincere about that. And the ten-year commitment emphasizes that. And I, and I can't emphasize that enough. That's why it's ten years.
Mayor, have a question. Um, why haven't that option always been there for Darien to have parties on, at, you know, on the green, movies on the green? Why haven't that option always been there? It seems like it's just a new thing.
Because I don't think anybody's ever pursued it, Alderman Vaughn.
And not, not on a gratis basis.
Not on a gratis basis. I mean, if you want to go to Carriage Greens, and you want to have something at Carriage Greens, you'll pay a rental fee to utilize Carriage Greens. We're not. We're not. And Michael was going to calculate what it would cost if we did a concert in the park. Lou Ramadanee has told us that on a, on a Thursday evening, if we have a movie on the green, he's willing to close two holes down for us so that we could set up at two o'clock in the afternoon, correct Lou? I mean, so we're, we're receiving a lot in return, and that's, there's not a monetary figure on that, Lester. You know, the thirty-six, three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars is, is a figure to buy equipment that's going to help him improve that golf course. And I, listen, I, I would not have gone to him unless I saw growth going on at that facility, really. I talked to Lou, I saw his plan, I talked to Brian and Heidi and Tony, and I, I heard from them what's going on, and in my heart, I believe this is a great, and it's a great move for the residents of this city. So if you don't support it, I understand that for whatever reason, but at the same time, this is a good deal for the city, and it's a good deal for our residents.
Ladies first, Mary?
Um, yeah, just going back, I think too, as relating to what Lester has said, Alderman Vaughn, I think we've seen successes of other community events. Um, our neighbors in Burr Ridge have, um, their, their concerts on the green have just catapulted, even have concerts going on in the parks in Willowbrook. So I think the trend to doing that type of entertainment has really taken off in the last few years. And, um, being the alderman of Ward Five, which Carriage Greens resides in, um, I've seen tremendous progress and growth and enhancements made to the course over the last few years. I'm also a golfer, so, um, I've seen improvements to the course itself. The residents that surround Carriage Greens, my home is not necessarily right there, but I can walk there, um, are very much in favor of supporting the enhancements, the growth of the course, the sustainability. Um, they would love to be able to walk to the restaurant and walk to, um, the patio and, um, and welcome all other people in Darien. And, um, it is a hub for golf events, for, for organizations all over the, really the suburban area, not just, um, you know, in Darien. So I'm hopeful that these enhancements will, um, be a win-win for my ward, for our city, and for many communities around us. And I see this partnership as being something similar to that was, that we did with Chuck's, um, many years ago, and that clearly has been a success and a win and a windfall for us. And I, um, I anticipate this will, will be the same, we'll be saying the same thing about this in a few years.
You know, and if I could explain something else, and Mr. Leopoldo, I know, is a supporter of economic development. And Mr. Was, you attended meetings, and you heard me make the comment, economic development is just not necessarily monetary. Economic development also involves, uh, maybe granting a variation to a, a business that assists them. I had a gentleman, please sit down, I had a gentleman who called me today who has a business on North Frontage Road, and his comment to me was, Mr. Marques, when you were part of municipal services, you granted variations to us that allowed us to open up our business. He said, I understand what helping business means in this community. I think he's here tonight. I think he's sitting in the, in the back of the room there. And he asked if he could come, and if he wanted to say something, he could say something, but we have businesses, we have the need to reach out to businesses. Uh, Alderman Sullivan will tell you, our economic development group is developing a survey where they're going to ask people in Darien, what kind of businesses would you like to see us bring into Darien? We've also been told that because we're a city that's pretty primarily built out, our goal has to be business retention. We have to keep what's here, and we have to enhance what's here. Now, you heard a report tonight about the police pension committee. You heard that's going up to one point nine million dollars. That comes out of our real estate taxes, okay? So where does our growth take place? Our growth has to take place with our sales tax revenue. We have to grow our sales tax revenue because we are not raising property taxes on our residents. It has to grow through sales tax revenue. And what better method than to enhance a business that already exists in this community? Any other questions? Mr. Was?
No, I've got, I've got, I've got a few.
Okay. What else? You want me to wait?
Please. If we have other businesses in town, long-lasting business, first off, let me, for, for, for the record, I've known the Broderick family. I don't know Brian as a lot, but my mom, God rest her soul, and her family, I've, I've known the Broderick name since I was about four years old, okay? Um, and I love you, brother, but I just, this, my gut feeling is not, is not here on this, and this is nothing personal. When I look and I drive down La Grange Road and I see Pelus Hills Country Club is, has closed down, or Westgate Country Club is off one hundred twenty-seventh and Regent has closed down, and, and Temper Edge off of Wolf Road and Plainfield Road has closed down, and watching Klein Creek Golf Course at Fifth Third hit the by two years, two years ago. Um, and I'm, I'm sure there's, you know, um, there's a few others that come, that come in my mind. I'm, I'm very, very concerned with it. Um, I do understand that, Alderman Sullivan, I do understand that Chuck's got an economic incentive, and it was, it was a great incentive because he, as, as, you know, Brian, you've said to me before in the past, is they took an eyesore, you know, it was, was a multiple businesses coming, coming in and out, coming in and out of there. Finally, we got something in there that's a staple towards town, but it, it's a restaurant. It's, like you said, it's a unique business, but is it, is it too unique of a business? If we have other businesses in town that may be struggling, and they're looking for help, support, economic development, if you will, and we can't help everybody, if we then turn around and say, we can't help you, are we then making other businesses say, well, don't go, don't go to Darien, don't think they, they've got, they, they helped Carriage Green, but they won't help anybody else? And then go up to Downers Grove or Winter Ridge or anything else? I, I, you know, I mean, I would love to see this work, but there's, there's a big piece of me that says I'm just, you know, you know, too cautious.
Alderman Kenny, the Economic Development Committee is developing a matrix, and as well as an application, procedure where there's different weights attributed to what type of help a business needs, monetary or non-monetary. And they're going to utilize that in order to determine whether or not a business should be helped out monetarily, or if it's going to be a variance or whatever. So they're going to take, those applications are going to be out there, they're going to be on our website. People are going to be able to go there, click on that, see the form, fill it out, and submit it to the city. So we're not negating anyone else. The other thing, Joe, to remember is, we're probably going to have future, uh, requests like this from other, but we have several possible things that could be taking place at Brookhaven and the Brookhaven Shopping Center, which I can't discuss tonight, but there may be a request there for additional funds. We have to, we have to weigh that and make decisions on that. This is unique. Carriage Greens is unique. Those other golf courses may be closing, but this golf course is not going to close. And this court, golf course is going to have the two virtual golf ranges inside, which are going to bring patrons in for a loungery where they can eat, play virtual golf, Lou can give lessons, so you have a winter income that can come in as well. So there's a lot of ways to answer your concerns with regard to other golf courses.
When you see, when it's, golf in the most part is typically middle-class and upper-class people that, that, you know, participate in activity, you, most people agree with it. When you're looking at the state of Illinois and you're looking at the taxes that are going through, and obviously, Darien, you know, if the state of Illinois was run like City Darien, we wouldn't be in this issue, but, but we are. You're seeing people leaving the state of Illinois, you're seeing your affluent people leaving to go to the other places. Those are the same kind of people that are coming to these golf courses. I just, I just, you know, and I'm, I hope I'm wrong, but I just see some of the, his, his patron, uh, Carriage Greens patrons, you know, leaving the state of Illinois, going, going to other places.
But you remember, Joe, it's also a banquet hall and restaurant, too.
I, I get that, I understand that. I've seen plenty of banquet halls, you know, go under, too.
Mike?
Just for whatever, throw my three hundred and sixty-six thousand cents in here. Uh, when I first heard of this concept, I'm generally against handouts to business. Uh, most of you that know me know I'm, I tend to be very fiscally conservative, uh, but I sat back because it was very in, in the preliminary discussion stages. I'm not a golfer. I have enough things in my life to piss me off besides yelling at a goofy little white ball besides everything else. a goofy little white ball, besides everything else. So I'm not speaking from the standpoint of enjoying it as a golf course. But when I first looked at it, I said, "Okay, I don't like the idea of a handout," but I said, "Let's work through this and everything." We got the concept, we sat down with Mr. Broderick, and, I mean, I told Brian and I told Joe, I said, "The only way I see this potentially working is if it's a loan." The minute we sat down, Brian had no objection to that at all. He was not looking for the handout, much credit to you, Brian, so he wasn't looking for that, and he is looking for what he can do for the community, okay? Now, the fact that it's set up as a loan as opposed to a handout, we have $500,000 in this reserve. Granted, this is a big chunk of that $500,000, but you have to look at what Carriage Greens is, too. Again, even though I'm not a golfer, it is an asset. I think a lot of people look at it, you look at Sterigenics and the garbage they're pumping out into the air, you look at Carriage Greens, and you look at all the nice trees and everything they're doing. While I'm not necessarily a tree hugger either, I can understand the differences between the two, but we are using a good portion of that $500,000 in this one shot, but it is one big shot, it is one major part of the city of Darien. The thing I would like to bring before the council, and I told Brian and Joe this before, when we have our goal-setting session, and when we have our budget meetings, I'd like to see us restore that $500,000 as we're receiving the repayments from Carriage Greens, so that we're building that back up, so we have it for future emergencies or future economic development. I'm not promising that, that's just my, me rambling here in my thought process, I do want to bring that before the council. So I look at it as totally different, and again, Mr. Broderick offered the use of it for a lot of different functions. Again, whether they work or they don't work, it has the ability to bring in a lot of other things to the city that we're not currently doing. My initial reaction back a couple of years ago, when this thought was across the desk, was, "Hey, just develop it, build a thousand townhouses there, and you're going to probably get more in terms of real estate taxes." But again, I think you have to consider, what is Carriage Greens to the city of Darien? Is it this gem? I think most people do look at it that way. Again, we got to deal with the economics of it, but when all is said and done, essentially all we're doing, we're not giving them $366,000, we're loaning them $366,000 interest-free, which based on the interest that we're currently earning is probably worth $40,000 or $50,000 over the course of those 10 years, in order to protect that, as well as potentially get a lot more community involvement with a lot of other things in there. So I have gone from being this, I'm still a financial conservative, but being a cynic with respect to this particular development, but again, if it's done right, I think it has a lot to offer, and Mr. Broderick, again, to your credit, I think he's been very forthcoming and very willing to work with us, however we want him to work with us. Again, there's plenty of security for the debt that he's going to owe us, so I'm comfortable with that. We have liens on the property, very similar to what we did with Chuck's. Chuck's, we had, we're getting zero and got paid back out of a lot higher rate. Mr. Broderick volunteered out of the virtual golf. We aren't currently, all we typically get out of it is the amusement tax. He's offered to share 50% of that revenue with us, aside from any other taxes that we'd be getting on it. So again, I think he's putting his, his butt on the line here, too, so I have become in favor of it as we've gone through these discussions and worked out the fine print. I don't get to vote on this, but for whatever my, my $366,000 are worth, that's it.
Is it, is it possible for us to delay the vote until Eric gets back?
No, I want to hold the vote tonight.
One, one comment, I just want to, I didn't make it out there when I seen this on the agenda, I had to go golfing. I usually go to Cog Hills, I actually went out there, and with a couple of things that, I hate to say it, but I went out there, I didn't know where to start, it wasn't clearly labeled. Get on the first tee, actually Alderman Vaughn was with me, and there was no water cart and no water person, and I asked the managers, their words of that, and they're like, they didn't show up, I'm like...
Was it water you were looking for?
Water or any refreshing beverage, and so, either one, though, and that sort of soured me a little bit, because, you know, it's one thing to invest in the, in the, in the business, but the management of it. So we're out there golfing on a 90-year, 90-degree weather day, and there's no water, there's no beverages, so how do we get revenue, free and assigned alcohol or beverage, right? So that's the issue I had, was the management there. And then I went to the, at the bar downstairs, and we had to wait 10, 12 minutes to get a drink, and I was really disappointed at how bad service was there. So now I'm thinking about this loan, that, okay, how do we get to this position? Why isn't the second backup delivering water and alcohol and beer to a golf course? That's like the number one job.
All right, I'm going to be, all, all fair is fair on this one, okay? I sang a funeral at Arleman Carmel this past spring, and they, they had the funeral luncheon at Arleman Carmel. Somebody, somebody, somebody dropped the ball, okay? And Brian got a luncheon together in 20, in 20 minutes flat. It sounded like it was our end that dropped the ball, not them. So for every bad story, like, now, I still have my opinion on, on the economic aspect of it, but from a service standpoint, you know, let's, let's be fair on that one.
Well, I know Alderman Clistic had, had contacted Mayor Marques about that, and we, we talked with Brian and his team, and, you know, we talked through that, and I think it was kind of ironic, the next, the next day, I think I was looking at the local patch, and there had already been an ad out for more servers, and you didn't hide that, you said, "Yeah, we, we had a problem with the employee," and anybody that knows some of the businesses, if you're relying on high school, young college kids, that can be challenging, and, and you didn't hide behind that either, you admitted, "Yeah, that was a miss." But, but again, what, what we had the chance to see is you recognizing that, and that's in part what you're trying to overcome. I know there's multi, multi-facets at the facility. I know your, your first and foremost was try to fix the golf, which, again, I don't golf, but I'm hearing from people, and Alderman Sullivan says the same thing and others, the course is, is really, really turning around, and your focus now is on, because you've told us about it, is on the food, particularly the restaurant, I think the banquets still do fine, but you are looking at fine-tuning a lot of those service things and advertising a lot of that. So again, Mayor, I don't know, that was more of your conversation with Alderman Clistic, but again, I was, we heard that, too, and I know you want to address that, and it's really important to you.
I mean, it was ironic that Tom sent me a voicemail message from Hawaii indicating this, and the very next day, Brian came in with Mike and I and Brian to negotiate this agreement, and one of the things we brought up, and I even mentioned, Alderman Clistic and Alderman Vaughn went out there, and this is, and Brian said, he says, "Getting cart people is a very difficult task, because they come in with an expectation, and it's the wrong expectation, and it's hard getting them, hiring them, and keeping them." And this one particular young lady just didn't show up for work that day. So he's very much aware of that. Lou, the equipment that Lou is looking for, for the golf course, are mowers of the type that with a smaller staff, he could get the fairways and everything cut in nine hours every two weeks versus what, Lou? Much longer period of time. So actually, the equipment allows a smaller staff to keep the course in, in good stead.
Alderman Vaughn?
Just for the record, I'm pro-business, all right? I'm in a local business, I don't want you guys to get that, that misunderstanding, so, you know, I just wanted to go on the record and say that. And you guys do have a nice golf course, and we had a good time out there, so.
Alderman Belzak?
I think anytime a city takes a, a chance on looking to improve itself and to improve its businesses, you're going to take the good with the bad, and you're going to have risks, and you're going to have benefits. In regard to this, I think our risks are really low. You know, my first question was, you know, where are we on the lean position regarding this property? If this doesn't work out, we've lost the time value of money, and that's all we've lost. And if it does work out, we're creating expansion for our tax base, we're creating a thriving business over there, and I, I think our risk is just so low that this is an opportunity we can't not take.
Alderman Shower, anything?
Guys, my position's always been the same thing, and you got to remember that I was the person that kind of put the Chuck's deal together. We're putting good money into good. The long-term aspects, rewards for Carriage Greens is going to be there, and we're going to get the money back out of it. That's how I feel.
Mr. Wise, you wanted to make another comment.
Thanks, my good friend. I appreciate that, I felt since you addressed me.
No, it's quite all right.
I take issue with the $23,500 base number that you've selected. I don't know how you got to that number, I don't know what type audit you did of this business, if any. I've provided you with some documentation there from the Illinois Gaming that suggests a number that raised in $5,5700 in two months, where Mr. Vanna had a number of $5,000 for the entire year. I don't know where that 23-5 number comes from. Time after time, this business has gotten different variances and approvals from this board. Zoning for a small golf range that was granted to this business. Ability for outdoor music, which is also available to him now. Most recently, Chuck's pursued it, and it carries out to every business here in this, in this city. He's afforded a great, a great benefit, he has legal gaming. I, I saw a gentleman here, he had a small chicken business, and he wanted one or two machines, and he got shot down, and he couldn't get it. This business has the maximum, and that will likely change with January 1st. I've watched him get a zoning variance of the golf course where he could sell two parcels of property for a tune of $450,000. The sale of parcels of property, to me, are not indicative of a thriving business, a jewel of Darien as it's described. I don't see that aspect. You, Mr. Mayor, make the determination that the, we need the sales tax revenue. An equal amount of, of tax revenue can be benefited if Mr. Broderick sought to sell off perhaps only the back nine, and kept his gaming, kept his banquet facility, and kept his other golf interests. I, I don't see it that way, and I don't know what mechanisms are in place to prove that Mr. Broderick's numbers from date of the money being forward to him, how, well, how will the city be able to audit the, the, the numbers that he provides? I don't know the answer to that question, but I take issue with the 23-500. I'd like to see this continued. I would, I, I would prefer not to see the mayor potentially make a tie-breaking vote, and all it would take would be a majority of you, with one of you starting to make the motion to delay. Thank you.
Any other comments from anyone in the audience? Mr. Vanna?
Mike, you know, the revenues that come out of this, we're able to audit like we do any, like if the hotels, so we had that by city code on our, on our, the taxes they're generating in terms of, of the food and beverage, the, the entertainment and that, so we have that, the sales tax we can get from the state, so...
Well, we get those numbers from the state, that's why my only concern was where he was getting his numbers from versus where you got your numbers from in the gaming.
Yeah, but again, if, if I were to give you the amusement tax number for July, be much different than what I would give you for January, and the gaming's no different. I mean, Chuck's might be consistent, but obviously, the golf course is, is, if there's golfers there and people at the bar in the summer, they're playing more. But again, I went to the website, I, maybe, maybe that's on uptick, he gave us this month or so, so, you know, this, this was, he didn't run January, you have to look at a 12-month period, which we did.
I realize that, but even those two months equal the amount that you're representing for the whole year, that would assume the rest of the year was essentially zero.
Maybe the golf course is doing already better, to some regards in terms of, of that, but again, that's just two months. I can't tell you if, if January's 400, I could tell you, I went to the state website, and I looked historically, we looked at, at a few years of revenue, and that's what it showed.
Mr. Leopoldo?
Thanks for the opportunity to speak again. A few moments ago, you mentioned that the Economic Development Corporation or Committee is coming up with a rubric in order to assess needs for various businesses.
Yes.
If this business hasn't come to us asking for this funding as a result of a dire need, I was wondering why this is moving forward tonight instead of going through that rubric process to assess need?
It went through the Economic Development Committee in terms of a presentation, their first meeting. The, the rubric is being developed for future endeavors, hasn't been developed yet. Anyone else from the audience? If no more, then the roll.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Nay.
Kenny?
No.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Nay.
Mayor Marques?
Aye. Motion passes. Consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal at the unit price for morning, noon, night for the jetting and cleaning of the storm sewer infrastructure at various locations throughout the city. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, second by Alderman Belzak, discussion. If none, the roll.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Takes us to questions, comments, and announcements. Do any of the aldermen have announcements for the council? Alderman Shower?
We do, are we still talking about the marijuana situation?
Yeah, but we're going to let you...
Gotcha. I, I want to make a quick announcement, I talked to Mayor Marques about this. Last Wednesday, I sold my house that I've lived in for 19 years at 7922 Pine Court. On August 15th, however, I found a apartment in Hinswood, I'm sorry, in Reflections at 1029 Hinswood Drive. So I'm, bottom line is, I'm still in Ward 1, and I'm in the process of changing all the information on over to there. The reason I'm bringing this up is, there's three people on the city council that I really want to thank for this whole, you know, process of selling my home and being involved personally with what's going on, and first and foremost, it's Mayor Marques. After the election, I told him, I said, you know, "I don't know if I'll be able to finish out the term," you know, "The house was on the market, had some other personal things going on." And Mayor Marques came to me and he said, "Hey Ted, I would really appreciate if you could find something in Ward 1 and, and stay on the city council," and that made a big difference for me, to be honest with you. So Mayor Marques, thank you.
You're welcome.
The second person I want to thank is Tom Belzak. Tom and I rarely talk, for the record, but when we do, we have some very good conversations, and I came to him with some personal advice, and he gave me probably the best golden advice I've ever had when it comes to selling this house, and because of that, it worked out perfectly, and thank you, Tom. And then, finally and most important, is Alderman Kenny. When I mentioned to Joe that, you know, the mayor had asked me to stay on, and, you know, I'm, you know, looking, you know, to stay in Ward 1, Joe picked up the ball and just ran with it, and he literally found me seven different items, or I'm sorry, seven different locations to go in and take a look at, and we finally found the run rate at number seven, and it worked out, and everything was taken care of, and I never asked him to go find anything, he said, "Let me handle this, let me get involved," and, Joe, I wanted to say thank you, because you did an excellent job. So I just want to let everybody know what's going on, and I plan on being here for the remainder of my term, so.
Good luck, Ted.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience have anything prior to our discussion on the cannabis? If none, then Mr. Vanna.
Thank you, Mayor. The, I think, Mayor, it was maybe two meetings ago, you had brought this issue up for a general update, and at that meeting, the city council was curious at what the community feels about this issue, and suggested that staff work on a survey, and we certainly did that, and we primarily received our, our feedback from Survey Monkey. We also had about 20, 20 or so paper copies, and I think we're giving out at Darien Fest. And this is, you know, really more for the council in terms of, of how you feel about the survey. We had 521 responses. Again, it was not, it's not a scientific survey, it's not a, it was not a mandate or, or anything, but it was just the council was interested on feedback. So included in the packet is a, kind of a summary of the, what the tallies were, and also comments that the city received back. I, I was happy to get over 500 responses, I thought that was actually pretty good. You never know, you know, usually we're coming to meetings and we've heard for three or four or five people. Here, you heard from over 500. At this point, it's really for the council to discussion, what the staff is looking for is direction, and if the, if the direction is the city council prefers to opt out, then they should, we want to hear that tonight, because that dictates that staff moves in a certain direction to bring information back to the city council, that would basically be an ordinance opting out. If I get, if a majority of the council wants us to move forward and not opt out and allow recreational marijuana facilities in town, then that's a different path. So we are, at this point, looking for direction from the city council on how to proceed.
I'm going to start, and I'm just going to say this, my position has not changed on it. I, I'm sure it's a moneymaker, I'm sure it's a revenue maker, but I would prefer not to have it in the city of Darien, so we'll leave it at that.
Does it make sense to have the chief, I hate to put him on the spot here, but get any of his insight into this?
Yeah, I think, Mike, now that you mentioned that, there's one other thing, Alderman Shower had asked the question at the last meeting or so, for information from the chief. The chief was able to get a report from, I think, I believe it was Colorado, he sent that to Ted, but I would ask that he send that to the whole city council so they have that info also, but he certainly... they have that info also, but he certainly could summarize it.
Greg?
Yeah, there was a few different reports. One by the Police Foundation, another by Colorado Chiefs of Police, and the report that Brian Vanna is talking about is the Rocky Mountain HIDA. It's High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. Got it. And so, just some points of, that they point out. HIDA is, since recreational marijuana was legalized, marijuana-related traffic deaths increased 151%. Since recreational marijuana was legalized, traffic deaths involving drivers who tested positive for marijuana more than doubled. Percentage of, or, excuse me, annual rate of emergency room visits related to marijuana increased 52%. Rate of marijuana-related hospitalizations increased 148%. Marijuana-only exposures more than tripled. Marijuana tax revenue represents only 9/10 of 1% of Colorado's fiscal year budget. Violent crime increased 18.6%. Property crime increased 8.3%. 65% of all local jurisdictions in Colorado have banned medical and recreational marijuana businesses. So, there's a lot of different pieces of information out there. There's a lot of marijuana sites. As of June of 2017, there were 491 retail marijuana stores in the state of Colorado, compared to only 392 Starbucks and 208 McDonald's. So, it outpaces a lot of businesses. There's a number of data points in, as Administrator Vanna said, I'll send it out to you. The reports are 92 pages long, but of reading material, it's like about 26 pages, so it looks a lot more intimidating than it is. A lot of it's footnotes and references and stuff, so you'll be able to see all that information.
Chief, is that just a police report? Is that just a, in general, all the different components with that as well? Like, for example, a friend of mine was up in Washington, you know, last fall, and he said that the homelessness is, you know, gone through the roof ever since that came in.
Yeah, there's, like I said, there's a number of them. I don't know if I can find it real quick here, but if I remember right, the homelessness went up like 126%, and, I can't find it. I think social services went up 148%. So, there's been quite a bit different increases and different things that you have to weigh out.
Whether you opt in or opt out, you still have to, you know, you know, I may say, push the law or whatever the case may be, because Naperville's looking at opting in, correct? Recently, what I read.
I believe they are. I talked to some Aurora folks, and they believe that they're going to opt in as well.
Okay, so whether we opt in or not, we still have to deal with the consequences of legalization down there.
Correct.
So, and more funding usually helps.
Alderman Vaughn? You're next.
I'll wait. I'll wait for Kenny.
Alderman Kenny?
I'm with Alderman Shower. I just don't, I don't want to say it.
Alderman Clistic?
We have to decide by this week. Now, we still have.
Harvey?
When are we going to have the final vote? Tonight already?
Well, I mean, if I.
No.
We're looking for direction. We're looking for direction.
Yeah, I, as you can see, I'm borderline, you know, I'm not one way or another, but, I mean, the survey looks like it's weighing for it, so if that's what Darien is looking for, then I'm fine with it, I guess.
Alderman Sullivan?
I think the survey was a great idea to get a census, but I think in no way should we feel like that is a mandate or a dictation. I did take it upon myself to push the survey out to as many people as I possibly could in my own personal contacts, knowing that it might have gotten past them with the direct connect, or, you know, maybe they're not even on direct connect, even though I've told everybody to do it, and not everyone listens to me, but. And I do know people filled out the survey, and I've had lots and lots of conversations with lots of people from young to old, and even friends that are in surrounding communities that aren't just in Darien. And, you know, I think what it boils down to is, as much as, you know, any additional tax revenue that we could get would be great for our bottom line and to fund things, I just don't think the trade-off is worth it. I think there's so many unknowns going into this initially, that we should really, you know, take the time to see how all this plays out. I have no doubt that the statistics that Chief has shared will be our future in Illinois, and we will, as a community, as a county, as a region, have to deal with it, because, you know, we're surrounded by areas, and I know for a fact that one of our surrounding communities will be supporting it, if not more than one. But I think for our community right now, it's in our best interest to not pursue this.
Alderman Belzak?
I think for the stage that we're at right now, that we should at least pursue it, to see what we could come up with that might work for us. I mean, there's a lot of variations on what we got in our pamphlet regarding zoning and where we can limit these things to. Again, we're taking the, we're getting the bad regardless. We might be able to get some good, and maybe we won't. I don't know. I think it's too early for us to make a decision right now. I'd like to see us, to give Brian the direction, at least look into what our possibilities are, especially regarding zoning it, and, you know, if we can limit it to, you know, a certain business district, again, far away from schools, far away from things that we don't want it to be by. But again, in a lot of ways, this is no different than a liquor store or a bar, and we certainly have those in Darien, and I don't see people coming in here telling us we should shut those down either. So, I think it's, it'd be close-minded just to say no, and I think we should at least look into it a little further.
Alderman Vaughn? I agree with everything Alderman Belzak has, you know, displayed. I think it'd be advantageous for us as a municipality, especially when we're talking about economic development, again, you know, tax dollars. I think this is an industry that has created its own lane. It's a high-growth industry outside of just marijuana dispensaries. You're looking at, you know, high-end, you know, restaurants and other things that could be potential assets to the community. Whether we allow it or not, people are doing it. They're purchasing it. Obviously, it's a huge market, but I think, I think, I think, you know, we should give it a shot, like Belzak said, give it a shot and see where it takes us, but we do have that, the power to regulate it as a municipality and change our zoning laws too. So, having a business district, like Belzak said, having a business district cater to that environment would be great. It's a social environment, just like people go out and enjoy alcohol, and it's a social environment. I think, you know, there's nothing on the books that, that should prevent us from doing it.
You know, it's interesting. Brian and I had a discussion, and Brian made the comment, and I agree with him, that if Darien did allow a dispensary in Darien, you don't want to hide it somewhere, because if you're going to, if you're doing it because you want the tax revenue, you want it somewhere where it's going to be accessible and it's going to be visible, so that, you know, it has the thriving business. I have a lot of mixed feelings. I've talked to a lot of people who don't want it. A lot of people don't see it in our community. A lot of them say it's not worth the tax revenue. I was on the council when we had the gaming issue come up. We said no to the gaming issue, and then we looked at our surrounding communities, and we saw what they had, and how many were adopting it, and I don't know if it was a year or two years later, we adopted it. And now, we have the gaming, and we make, what, $180,000 a year in revenue from that. So, what I'd like you to do is, I'd like you to let Brian know the specific information you want. Do you want to know where it could go? What our zoning could be? Do you want to know potential revenue that might come about from this? Those are the kind of things he's going to need to be able to present data to you. But we, if we give, we get that information from him and it disseminate to the group, and we hold a vote, and the vote is to opt out. We have only several months then to create the ordinance opting out. So, time is an issue.
Well, I could tell you that the revenue part is really, really challenging.
Yeah.
You know, I've heard all kinds of estimates out there. I can't, I can't tell you which ones are accurate, because they're based on.
Colorado.
Colorado and different, just a number of different items. But I could tell you that the, I mean, if the council wants to pursue this, really, the first thing we do is the Plan Commission starts holding public hearings. So, that, you know, I'll have to look into that a bit more, but it becomes a zoning change, a zoning amendment, like any other zoning amendment. What I would do is bring it to the council. The council would direct the Plan Commission to look at it. So, regardless of, you know, specific, you know, if there's questions on zoning, I think the council, once they determine that we should look at this, really should defer to the Plan Commission initially for the, for the public hearing, the public comments, and the recommendation. That's how I anticipate the zoning would work.
Are we going to take the survey into account? I mean, because the city has weighed in on the survey. I read through all the 81, 81 responses on there.
What's your question, Alderman?
I said, are we going to consider the survey as one of those validations of what the community wants?
Is who going to consider that? The council?
We.
Oh, you got to ask.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's definitely something to look at. I don't know, I don't believe it's the overriding factor.
When you send out a survey to 4,000 households, and you get 500 back, you know, that's clearly,
I mean, it might be decent compared to some other things, but.
What I liked about that survey is actually, the people were actually writing sentences and paragraphs, and then just.
Right, I was reading the comments.
And those, whether you're for it or against it, I was, I was, you know, happy to see that, you know, somebody actually took thought and put, not just, you know, no or yes, and oh, this sucks, or whatever.
Even people who said no, said that, but if you do do it, tax it.
Oh, yeah.
You know, tax it.
That percent was pretty high.
That percent was really high. 50%.
Those were in the 80s.
Although, the interesting thing there, there have been some articles recently in the Wall Street Journal, as well as other publications, indicating if you overtax it, if you tax it at the full amount, the price is going to be so expensive that people will still buy it on the black market, because it's less expensive. You see the states running into those problems with the casinos. They anticipated getting so much tax revenue, but by the time you're paying your licensing fees and everything, no casino operator, Arlington Park said, we don't want any part of the casino over here, because we're not going to be able to make enough off of it.
I think the max is 3%.
One other factor I want you to consider, Greg Hart called me the other day from DuPage County, and DuPage County is discussing this very issue at the county level, and he wants to know the results of our meeting tonight. He was invited to come tonight. He could not make it tonight for some other, for some reason, very legitimate, but I'm going to give him a report on what took place. But he said at the county level, and he doesn't mean to influence us, but at the county level, they would like to see municipalities opt out of it, so that, you know, Darien didn't have to worry about what Willbrook was going to do, or Woodridge was going to do. And they can't force that on us, but they would, you know, they really want to know where the different municipalities are. So, I'm not the only mayor he's calling. He's calling other mayors to get their input as well.
So, I just throw that in there, so you have that information. Anything else for Brian? So, we really have two people that are really dead set against it, Joe and Ted. We have Lester, and we have Tom. And Tom, who are, and Mary's, Mary would opt out at this point. We have three Aldermen then, who are looking to pursue further. We don't have Eric. We'll have to ask Eric when he comes back from Canada.
Yes, I think, you know, the best way to do this is as soon as we can prepare some motion, really with direction, which we can do at the next meeting, then we'll, then we'll determine which path we should take.
Yeah, we'll do that. So, the September 16th meeting, we'll have something on it regarding this. There will actually be a vote. Anything else by any of the Aldermen or anybody in the audience? Alderman Belzak?
Blue light bulbs are still on sale for 9/11, and I believe they're being sold in City Hall right now. They're $2 each. Show your support for 9/11. Buy a blue light bulb, put it in your, over your door, and support the community and support first responders.
Very nice.
Anyone have anything in the audience they want to add? I don't want to miss anybody tonight. I know this was a long meeting tonight. I thank you for your patience. This is longer than we've gone the last couple of meetings, so I appreciate you being here. Motion to adjourn? Alderman Kenny, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion. Meeting is adjourned.
Who made this second?